Good evening. I'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held September 19, 2017 at 6:00 PM. City Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Althouse?
Here.
Councilmember Henry?
Here.
Councilmember Norman?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Howdige?
Here.
Mayor Olinski?
Here, thank you. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up is a brief summary of current events by mayor, city council, and/or city manager. Public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly known as for legal action. Do we have any council members who'd like to share anything?
Okay, I'm gonna do all the military ones, would ya? Okay. I attended the Verde Valley Leadership Group Class 12, had their retreat last week, a week before, which was wonderful. Class 12 actually has four City of Cottonwood employees in it, so we kinda ruled the roost there this year, out of eleven or twelve students, so it was very neat. I attended the Mingus Republican Luncheon, and our Secretary of the State was the speaker, Michelle Reagan. It was very interesting to hear what she has to offer. I had to ask Mary Ann if she was aware of her program, and of course, she's on top of it. She knows exactly what's coming, so it was just an interesting speaker to listen to. I'm gonna give the kudos. We, uh, council member, I'm sorry, I'm totally flustered. Councilmember Althouse and I attended an educational program at Flip City Gymnastics last Thursday. It's where she and I and Modified Motorcycle Association and a bunch of other motorcycle riders, in fact, the city manager was there as well. We brought our motorcycles down to Flip City, and the kids got to check 'em out. We gotta educate them on what to do and what not to do around a motorcycle, because we had TBR coming in town. They had a blast climbing on some of the bikes and getting to see what the motorcyclists were like and the real people, and it was just a really fun event. And coloring books. And we gave them coloring books, educational coloring books on how to be safe and aware when motorcycles are around, help mom and dad see motorcycles when you're riding. Anyway, that was just an awesome event. The kids were amazing. I also attended Cottonwood Oak Creek School District's Non-Traditional Family Fair. That was a community event last week where, at the district office, we had a whole bunch of services for families, Buena Vista Services, all kinds of children's services there. I was there for the first about forty-five minutes of it. They had great food, and it was just a wonderful event to have that many services in one location. You could just walk through, and if you needed something, there you are. So, kudos to the Cottonwood Oak Creek School District and the people that set that up. They did an amazing job.
Any other council members, please?
In addition to the items Kyla talked about, I also did Patriots Day, which was September 11th, to honor nine eleven, at the American Legion Post 25. They did a ceremony. If you've never attended this ceremony, it just, it really touches your heart, makes me cry every year, but was there representing that. And then, Councilmember Allen, her husband Jim, myself and my husband, attended the VFW on Friday, September 15th, the MIA POW Remembrance Ceremony, which is also another tear-jerker, and I told Kyla to bring a Kleenex, 'cause that one really gets ya. And we both went up and lit a candle to remember someone. So, Al representing, and then, of course, Councilmember Allen and I were both at Thunder Valley Rally this weekend. We had the honor of welcoming everybody from city council, representing the mayor and the city council at Thunder Valley Rally, and a good time was had by all. There were a ton of people there. It was amazing, amazing turnout.
Let me give my two cents back in that, if that's all right, Mayor.
Please.
We had a great time. I mean, it's a noisy event, and it is two days, but the musicians that were playing were amazing. One of the bands named Mogion, I'm sure a lot of people know Mogion, is, they were kind of a warm-up band for the main band, Blue Oyster Cult, but really, they should be a top-rated band themselves. They were just amazing. The people were polite. There was no arguing, no fighting, although there was quite a bit of drinking, which is amazing, as our chief had said, when you have that much interaction. But the number of people there, I was told there was thirty-five hundred the first night, and I know there was more than that the second night, because Councilmember Althouse and I sit quite a ways back from the stage. We're becoming old fogies, and I don't wanna be right up front with everybody. So, we're quite a ways away, and the first night, you know, there was quite a distance between us and the next people. The second night, they were right up to us. So, it was a pretty successful event. I have to give my two cents on that. That's it. That's it.
Good deal. Any other council member? Okay. I'll just share, just briefly, probably the most impactful thing I've done the last couple of weeks was, was able to participate in the Verde Valley Forum, eighth and ninth, September 8th and 9th, which was all about strengthening pre-K through 12 education in our community. And I was very honored to be, I think, one of the hundred and fifty or so people that participated in that, and really came up with some good strategic goals to make sure that we strengthen education here in our community for our children. So, happy to be a part of that. And that's it. City Manager?
Council, Mayor Councilmembers, ADEQ, and this was in the management report last week, has asked us to make the public aware of a informational meeting that they'll be holding on a area, it's really mostly outside of Cottonwood, between Cottonwood Street and Highway 89A, kind of outside the semi-city limits. They've been following a plume of contamination that originated from a couple of dry cleaners that were inside the city, and they've been communicating with the public all along, but they do want to update the public on September 26th at 5:30 PM at the Recreation Center. So, if you're in that area or you have any interest in getting informed on this issue, that will be available. There'll also be folks from our water department there to answer any questions about water service in the city, and any impact that this has, which it has no impact at all. That's it.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is Call to the Public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. We had intended to get Superintendents King and Hargrove on the agenda to make a presentation to council. If it's all right with council, I'd like to call them both forward now to give a presentation on the upcoming budget override. And I apologize that we didn't get you on the agenda for presentation, but all's well that ends well. You're here, you're on camera, so...
Exactly, and we don't mind being forgotten. It means there's no trouble, right? We do have PowerPoint to share with you, and really why we're here is to keep you informed on where we are on the air. Neither of the requests that we have for you are new. They are all extensions of overrides that we've had.
Step up to the mic, please. Remote.
You tell me, right again?
Okay, well, I need to see if it's up first. How do we get that?
Chief, just push the on button and face it at the white. Face it at the white walls, and it'll reflect on both of them.
I hear a positive sound.
There you go. Thank you, sir. Start over.
No problem.
So, what we're here to talk to you about is the upcoming overrides for both of our districts. Again, this is not new taxes. This is something that's gone on for over thirty years, and it's something that we thank our community for, because without it, our students would not have the opportunities that they have. So, when you look at this, and November is the official date for the override, but what we'd like you to remember is that on October 16th, the mail-in ballots will come out, and that's when your first opportunity to determine yes or no, your approval or your disapproval of this will happen. So, the override again is something that we do, because unfortunately, right now, Arizona is not funding the school finance formula, as they have, what, twenty years ago, Steve?
Nineteen ninety-two, Arizona was right around twenty-fifth in funding in the nation, and currently, we're right around forty-ninth. So, the last twenty-five years was in terms of state supports for our public schools.
Mr. King, if you could speak more closely into the microphone, thank you.
Nineteen ninety-two, Arizona was twenty-fifth in the nation as far as school funding goes on a per capita basis. Last twenty-five years, we've dropped to forty-nine, so what we see is a pretty drastic and dramatic reduction in the funding of the state for our public schools.
Thank you.
And one of the biggest areas that we've seen that funding drop is within our capital projects. That's gone down by about eighty percent. So, as you can imagine, trying to run the city, we're trying to run our buildings and keep them up to date with about twenty percent of what we used to have, which, quite honestly, Steve and I can tell you, is pretty close to impossible, but we're doing the very best that we can. This override is so the community can support programs beyond just those basic English, social studies, math, and science. This provides those elective classes and those extracurricular activities that we know are good for our kids. We know are good for making sure that they're well-rounded, interested. Some of them are the only things that keep them in school.
We're there. As you can see, what we're both asking for is, this election is a ten percent override. We can go up to fifteen percent, but traditionally, Cottonwood schools, including Mingus, have always asked for a ten percent override, and for our schools, for Cottonwood Oak Creek that funds art, music, class size reduction, gifted education, as well as intervention programs for our neediest learners.
This is the first time we've used the PowerPoint, so we're trying to figure out how we're gonna tag-team on this.
You're doing a great job.
So, thank you for your patience with us. Again, this is really what we look at to make sure that we are providing those programs. So, as you can see through this, you know, the cuts, again, the legislation is what has happened, and it doesn't look to be improving right now, so that's why this is so imperative. Here's what happens. We are asking for it now, because this is generally a seven-year override. However, as you can see, after the fourth year, funds start being cut by a third, and a third, and a third. So, we come to you early so that we can get past and not have to go to the third loss each of those years. So, that's why we come to you every four years instead of every seven years, so that we can stay stable in the amounts of the programs we're providing our students.
And I'm very happy that you mentioned the Verde Valley Forum for Public Affairs that you attended a couple of weeks ago, and that what that was all about was, it was about strengthening pre-K through 12 education. We always add the pre. in there, because every bit of research tells us that early childhood education is probably the best investment we can make for our children. But a key point that came from that forum itself was about school funding, and what we've seen, and we've talked about this a little bit, but especially in the last ten years, it's been increasingly acceleration through either tax cuts, tax breaks for corporations, and so on. So, what they've done basically is pass the burden down to the local taxpayer, and we've been very, very blessed, and I don't use that word lightly, blessed by this community that you've been so supportive of what we have in our kids. Roughly, we serve two thousand kids in Cottonwood Oak Creek School District, and Mingus has served about thirteen hundred kids. So overwhelmingly, our schools, our families are choosing public schools. And I really appreciate you, Ms. Allen, that you mentioned the Non-Traditional Family Fair that you attended as well, and what we're seeing an increase, dramatic increase, in the numbers of children that are being raised by grandparents, foster care families, homeless children, and so on. Those things matter, matter in the home lives of these kids, so any kind of support we can give, and I really appreciate you coming out for that.
And one of the things that Steve and I both agree with, we just use different terminology, is these are our kids. These are the kids that we have, and I say it takes a village to be able to raise them. When we grew up, that village helped to support us, and now it's our turn to pay it forward so that we can support these students and these children, 'cause we're aging, and if we give them a quali-- yeah, I am aging.
I'm with you.
If we give them that quality education, then we're going to have them and hold them in this community so that as we get older, they're here and available for us. And as we get older, too, we continue to support those younger generations, because they are who we want them to be, not we push them to the side and just let them go on their own. So, really, this opportunity to support our kids is what keeps our schools strong and what keeps our community strong, and these programs help us to be able to do this. For instance, music. These are programs that are imperative, not only for the development of the child in the academic areas, but it's also that opportunity for them to be able to socialize, to develop those strategies for stress, none of us have any of that, do we? And to be able to find something that they can take with them as a lifetime skill that they have as a hobby, or something they can do on the side, I think of our staff. Art, oh my goodness, do you know the importance of art therapy? The importance of being able to produce something and create something is the highest level of learning, and art provides that opportunity for our students. If you'd like to look at any of the things that we're doing, and awards that our students win because they are so talented in that area, that I get emotional, because I cannot imagine having to tell them that we can't do that or provide that for them. PE, hmm, let's see. In this day and age, the video games, those types of things, when we start out young in our elementaries, we teach the skills to be able to not only be physical, but also the nutritional areas. Those are, again, important, so that as we grow, they're in a healthier environment, they know, again, how to handle that stress, those emotional things, in a way that's productive and that they can get on through life. Oh, this is my favorite right now. We're getting ready to do an incredible play, and have any of you gone to our plays? If you haven't, you have to. I've been in different school districts where we've had theater, and I have never been to a play this good. The kids last year, when I interviewed, said, "Nia, would you come to our play?" And I did, and it was the best opportunity I had, and then the next night, I brought all my family. They thought it was pretty amazing, too. But again, these are things we can't take from our kids, and these are things that Steve gets to tell his kids that they get to do someday. Our vocational programs are in there also, along with many of our other programs like dance that we do. So, those are the areas that we wanna think of, along with counseling, those types of things, too.
And just on a personal, both my children, I have two daughters, one's seventeen, fifteen. It's amazing how fast they grow up. I just saw your children outside, Mayor, and they're gonna get there, too, someday. But they both attended Cottonwood Public Schools, and they also attended Mingus High School. My oldest is a senior right now, my youngest is a sophomore, and the number-one reason they go to school, well, for the academics, of course, but on top of everything else, is for their art programs they have there. I don't know if you're familiar with Mingus' art programs, but they are absolutely phenomenal. Mr. Teague, especially, has really been a mentor to my children, and it's that connection that we have. When she talks about our kids, that's a key thing. It's, we have, yes, we have two different districts. We have Cottonwood Oak Creek and we have Mingus. However, ninety-nine percent of our kids go up to Mingus, and so that's why we're standing here together, to say, these are our kids that we're working towards and looking towards. So, thank you, I guess, as we, we can see these things, that's the failure. I don't wanna focus on failure, it's not gonna go there, but we cannot be advocates. That's the thing to keep in mind, too. We are public servants as well, and so we cannot advocate one way or the other. So, this is strictly informational, but I do encourage people to vote. In the last off-year election in 2014 statewide in Arizona, only seventy percent of the people that were over the age of eighteen actually got out and voted, and I think that's a shame. I think number-one thing that we should be doing at schools is teaching that citizen and engagement in our own government and our community. So, thank you. Anything else?
No, I think that's really what it is. I know that this is an open portion where questions aren't, not supposed to be solicited. However, please contact any of us. We would be more than happy to provide the information that you need, and we can't tell you how to vote, but we can ask you, please vote, and encourage others to also. So, thank you.
Thank you, both of you, for being in. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And this was sort of the condensed version. We're gonna do an expanded version during my half-hour Inside Cottonwood program. I'm gonna be interviewing both superintendents here in a couple of weeks, so we'll post that on Facebook and everything, so we get the word out as much as we can.
We appreciate that very, very much.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the council during Call to the Public? If not, then we're going to move on to the consent agenda.
I move we pay the consent agenda?
Sorry?
I'm, oh, are you gonna ask your question first? I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna read the items on the consent agenda.
I jumped right in there.
That's okay. That's okay. Let me just read the items real quick, and see if anybody wants an item pooled. You jump into the end, aren't you?
Yeah, I am.
So, this is the consent agenda. So, the following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. So, we have three items. Item one is Resolution Number 2913, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Sedona Fire District to allow the district partial access to the city's Spillman Public Safety Information System. Item two is consent to assignment of High Five Hangars Unit Two from Backus Family Investments to John Crohn, in consideration of authorizing the city manager to approve future assignments of leasehold interests in this complex. Item three, Resolution Number 2914, approving and authorizing the acquisition of certain utilities and maintenance easements for the installation and maintenance of a waterline along Willard Street. Any members of the council that wish to pool any item from the consent agenda?
I'd like to have number two pooled.
Number two, okay. Any, any other items, council members? No? Any members of the public wish to have an item pooled from the agenda? Okay, what I'd like to do, then, is just move forward with approving the consent agendas, item one and two.
One and three.
Excuse me?
One and three.
One and three. I tried to, okay, one and three.
I move we pay the consent, uh, pay. I move we approve the consent agenda, items one and three.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Allen, and a second by Councilmember Althouse. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda items one and three are approved. City Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2913 and Resolution Number 2914.
Resolution Number 2913, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Sedona Fire District for the Spillman Public Safety System. Resolution Number 2914, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving and authorizing the acquisition of certain utilities and maintenance easements for the installation and maintenance of a waterline along Willard Street. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. All right, consent agenda, consent agenda item two is consent to assignment of High Five Hangers Unit Two from Backus Family Investments to John Crohn, and consideration of authorizing the city manager to approve future assignments of leasehold interests in this complex. Mr. Bartasch, or Steve Horton, who would like to present this?
Sure. Mayor and council. I'll, I'll kick it off. I think the, the part of it, probably, that the vice mayor was most interested in having discussed outside the consent agenda is the second part of it, but by way of introduction, this is a commercial leasehold condominium that the council approved some years ago that Mr. Backus and his family developed up on Air Park Road, and it consists of a number, I believe it's five, airplane hangars, and the condominium plat that the council approved, the, the city still owns the land underneath. It's leased, it's long-term leased, but the condominium itself, move this over, excuse me, the condominium itself, the, the, there is a nonprofit association that owns the structure and the common spaces, and the condominium owners, who are lesses of the city, own the interior spaces, the hangars. And when the council initially approved this, it wanted to know, and we've since added language to these leases to make sure that these are, and these are hangars, so this isn't as much of a concern as it is for some of the other properties along Air Park Road, but the council wants to be sure, it knows who it's, did, wanted to know exactly who its tenants were going to be, and it had language in, in the documents that required council approval of assignment of these leasehold interests to the condominium purchasers as they came forward. This, I believe, is the last of the initial condominium units, hangars, that were developed that is going to be transferred from Backus Family Investments to a purchaser, and so this is, this is asking for council's consent to the assignment of the leasehold interest attached to that. And then, secondarily, the last time we were here on another assignment, Mr. Backus pointed out that one of the, I believe it's nineteen, seventeen or nineteen-seventeen amendments to the original Air Park lease had provided, in one context, that the city manager could approve assignments. We, and, so we were wondering if, if we didn't not have to come back to council each time an assignment was presented or requested. We looked at that and concluded that that document was restricted to a couple of the lots in, in one of the replats of the original Air Park plat. It's really hard to unpack at this time with as many amendments and changes as there've been up there over the years. But the idea is now come forward to, maybe on this project, and maybe in, on other assignments, the council may wanna delegate to the city manager the ability to review and, and approve these assignments without taking them to council, and just shortening the process for applicants.
Hmm, okay.
And I see Mr. Backus, and Mr. Backus are here, and they may wanna address you about either or both parts of that.
So, we're really looking at just expediting the process for assigning these, giving it authority to the city manager to move this forward?
And right now, this is, the item on the table is, is the High Five Project. We can come back and, after we, we sort through some of the other parts, parts of the lease, if you wanna direct us to look at that, and, and see if you wanna broaden that scope, too. But right now, you'd be moving to allow the city manager to approve future assignments of leasehold interests in the High Five Complex.
Any discussion on this from, from council? No?
No, thank you.
Okay. Is council comfortable with, with moving forward with this? Okay.
Does any of the, Mr. Backus, just have anything they'd like to add?
Are you good, Bob?
No, I don't think so. We, we discussed this when we, when these condominiums were first put in, and because the, the association is, actually, holds the lease, it's not the individual people, it's, it's the association who are in, the individual people who are in that association. So, it's just a matter of changing people in that association. It doesn't really affect the lease with the city at all. We just wanna make sure that they have a reason to have a hangar, you know, so that we can keep the FAA happy, so. Anyway, and then the other one, the other ones, depending on what we, what we come up with later. It's just a way to, to get it done a little bit quicker and not take up the time of the city council for these things that don't, are really not that necessary, so. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
I'd add that the, the city manager can also decide to kick something up, up to you, if, if he looks at it. I mean, giving him the authority doesn't mean he has to make a decision. He can make the decision if, if it seems like, like an easy enough decision to make. We did have a request some point within the last couple of years that I think both staff and the council were, would have been uncomfortable with, because there's still FAA jurisdiction o-over the airport, and there was a request to use one of the hangars as, as a marijuana growing operation. And our covenants to the FAA, as part of the, the grant funding we've received over the years, is that we will be in compliance with federal law. So, even though there's the ability to, to grow medical marijuana, that would still violate our, our federal grant assurances. So, I, that's one case, for example, where either the city manager or the city council might say no to that use, but that's the only example in, in many, many years I can think of.
Okay. All right, then I would entertain a motion.
I have a, a quick question, though, Steve. On that same vein, from the flip side, though, you just mentioned that our city manager could kick the can to council, but also somebody who felt that they were aggrieved by a decision could also voice their concerns with council as well, correct?
Sure.
I move to approve consent agenda item number two.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. And we move on to new business. Item one is interview and approval of Resolution Number Twenty Nine Twelve Appointing a Member to the Industrial Development Authority. Good evening.
Good evening. I came more prepared this time for you all and have interview questions with all the applicant's names on them, so I'll pass them on for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we've got, that's okay. Too many than too few.
Amanda, this is for the IDA, so just, just the one out.
Thank you.
This first agenda item that you're looking at for boards and commissions is for the Industrial Development Authority. In the background here, I've included that there are two for your terms open on the authority board, and they were advertised. We had one application so far, and I contacted Mr. Rob Williams, who is here for you to interview. Do any of you have any questions about the, the IDA before you'd like to interview them? Tim?
I believe what we've done is, if there's one applicant and one or, you know, more seats available, then we typically just run them through the wringer a little bit up here, but don't necessarily score them.
Right.
Okay. So then would, would the council then like to call Mr. Williams forward and just ask him the questions that are on our sheet? Does that sound good?
I think just get to know him. I don't, I don't think we've asked the questions before.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Williams.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Please share with us why you wish to be on the IDA.
Well, I followed up many years ago when I was in private business and over in the Prescott area, and they had a very active IDA over that area, and it helped finance a number of new businesses and promote economic development over that area. And I would hope someday that with the pickup in economic activity we've seen at the Planning and Zoning Commission last year, particularly last six months, maybe this will be an opportunity to assist in that further development of our city, which is so important to create new jobs and so forth. I have a degree in real estate many years ago. I spent forty-six years basically in the real estate industry. I had fourteen years in mortgage lending and banking experience, mainly with commercial properties. I spent approximately twenty years in the appraisal business, appraising properties for that in private industry, and sixteen years, which my last assignment was with the State of Arizona, Arizona Department of Revenue and Property Tax Division, where I was an appraiser initially with the, helping the county assessors with their commercial, valuation of commercial industrial properties and complex properties throughout the state. And then my last eight years, I was with the State Assess Section, valuing railroad properties, gas pipeline properties, and then last, the electric utility and gas utility companies and major power plants. I've lived in Cottonwood for the last twelve years, retired here. This is my second stint here. I lived here in the mid-eighties for six years in the area. I've been on the Planning and Zoning Commission for the past seven years. I'm currently their vice chairman. That has given me a, excellent insight, I think, into what's, development activities going on in the city and the potential for, for our growth. I also served on the two thousand five general, two thousand twenty-five General Plan Committee and on the commission that, that approved that for your, for your approval. I've also spent as a consulting with private industry on a power plant in Phoenix for the last seven years on a part-time basis, but it sort of fits in with my background and hopefully, like I say, it would be good hopefully down the road here, we can maybe kick this into meeting more than once a year than I understand it's been happening the last few years.
I'm glad you know that already.
Yes, yes.
Didn't want to disappoint you.
Yeah, that's true.
Not the most active board.
Yeah, but looking at some of the other cities, Yaupai County, for instance, their IDA has been apparently very active, not only in economic, you know, warehouse and business, but also promoting educational funding and also housing subsidies. So again, we see that, I see that as, housing is a real critical area as well, affordable housing in this town. It's, so maybe this is a vehicle that possibly could be explored to, to help that.
Well, thanks for being willing to, to apply and volunteer. I've known your work on the commission as both commissioner and as vice chair. I know you'll work hard on behalf, so thank you.
You're welcome, Yaupai. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or do you have any?
No questions from council?
No, I think Mr. Williams is an excellent individual to serve on this board.
Well, let's sign him up, then.
Sign him up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
I did have a question for our city attorney. I didn't have a chance to look, but we do not have a prohibition against members of one board serving on another board, correct?
I know of none.
Excellent. Then in that case, I'd like to move to approve Resolution Number Twenty Nine Twelve Appointing Robert Williams as a member of the City of Cottonwood Industrial Development Authority.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Henry made the motion, and Councilmember Pfeiffer seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion's approved. And City Clerk, please read Resolution Number Twenty Nine Twelve.
Resolution Number Twenty Nine Twelve, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Robert Williams, a member of the Industrial Development Authority Board for the City of Cottonwood and establishing his term of office. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Okay, up next is interview of Parks and Recreation Commission applicants.
Mayor, I'm going to excuse myself because I've already.
Very good. Councilmember Norman is on the selection committee, so she's going to step down. Good evening.
Good evening again.
Again.
We had two openings for the Parks and Recreation Commission from, um, commission members whose terms have just expired. We received three applications for these two positions, so they went through the blind matrix process already. The applications we have received were from Ann Shaw, Doug Hulse, and Richard Rokus. The criteria to be on the Parks and Recreation Commission is that they must be living within the city limits, which all three of these applicants do meet that criteria. All three of the applicants are here to interview with you.
Very good. Thanks to all three for, for, one, applying and also for being here, and, uh, two of you for reapplying. So what I'd like to do is just go down the list in the order that they're presented in our packet. We're going to call each one of you up and interview. We have just a few simple questions to ask of you, and we won't be making a decision tonight. What happens is there's a, a committee which already scored your applications on a blind matrix. So essentially, they, they reviewed your application based on the, on the qualifications of the, of the office for which you're applying, and they scored you. We're going to score you tonight on your interview here with us in public, and then we're going to combine those two totals and make a decision at a, at the next council meeting. So what I'd like to do then is call up Ann Shaw, please. Good evening. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council.
So first question is, please tell us why you wish to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission?
Well, I'm really just interested in continuing service. I started on the Parks and Rec Commission in nineteen ninety-nine, pardon me, and have, have a continuing interest in, in our parks and, and other aspects of, of city life here in Cottonwood. So I'm, I'm mainly interested in, in continuing on, helping with five-year planning and some of the things that we have coming up. I, I feel like I have a depth of knowledge gained in the nearly eighteen years, it's not really eighteen years, but, um, close to it anyway, that, that I have sat with the other members of the commission.
Okay. What are your specific qualifications for the Parks and Rec Commission?
Well, apart from having been a commissioner all this time, I, I also continue to serve as the governing board president for New Visions Academy, and although the school is closed, the corporation continues to exist. And so I, I still do serve in that capacity. I'm a teacher, and so I, I have experience with, with kids. I'm aging, so, and I have, personally, I have, you know, aging going on in, in contrast with kids coming up and, and have really felt a great deal of pride in the recreation center that this city has been able to create. There are so many aspects of the city that I take pride in, but that is on the top of my list. I really think that it's, it's a jewel in the crown.
Right. Thanks. And last question is, what do you hope to accomplish during your appointment?
Whatever needs to be done. Generally, what we're doing as commissioners is considering issues, listening to various presenters at times, and just preparing to make recommendations to this body i- in the event that, that something needs to, to be taken care of. We are largely serving as a discussion group rather than a decision-making body. So I just, I, I, I want to continue to offer my perspective on, on what I, what I feel others believe is important.
Okay. Do you have any questions for us?
I don't. I don't think of any.
All right, well, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Doug Hulse. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Well, we kind of spoiled it for you. You already know the questions. Fortunately, that's the hard part about going first, but we're going to give Mr. Rokus the advantage here at the end. He's going to, okay. Number one, please tell us why you wish to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission?
I've spent a lifetime of serving the community. After graduation from college, I worked for the Arveta Colorado Police Department for twenty-three and a half years, pardon me. During that time, I served as a crime prevention officer dealing with the public. I created the City of Arveta Community Policing Program, set up the first substation for the City of Arveta, working with the community, helping the community to develop relationships. I worked with the school district, created a community organization called Fostering Better Community at Foster Elementary, where we created an environment, providing all of the county services to the low-income neighborhood that Foster Elementary served. At that time, Foster's school turnover was about seven times from the day of, uh, school starting to the day ending, the student population would have turned over seven times. Probably by the time we finished with the community situation, providing the services that were not available to those people, then turnover rate had dropped down to about two times per year, which was a big improvement. I also served as a crime prevention through environmental design expert, assisting in developing parks and recreation with crime prevention in mind and physical safety for the population when they were using the parks and recreation. I was on the planning and review boards for the City of Cotton, or Car, Arveta, pardon me, and approved plans for new construction in the, in the City of Arveta as far as crime prevention was concerned. And I retired in nineteen ninety-seven. I moved home to Arizona, to Cottonwood. Vice Mayor Hodigee and myself grew up together in Flagstaff, Arizona. When I came home, I found Vice Mayor Hodigee was the mayor of Cottonwood, which was a nice thing to see, somebody that I knew for sure. I began working, my wife went to work for the city in planning and zoning. I then became involved with the Parks and Recreation Commission in two thousand, and a lot of Ruben's hair has turned to gray because of my decision in two thousand and two to ask him to consider building a rec center, which he agreed to somewhat reluctantly, but after I explained how we could pay for it, he was on board a hundred percent. End result was, we now have the Cottonwood Recreation Center. I've worked diligently with the community, trying to find out what it is the community wants, how we can improve our parks and recreation. Over the years, we've created several different entertainment programs such as Rhythm and Ribs, which was very popular for several years. When I wear their T-shirts to the rec center, I get inquiries from people, "Where is Rhythm and Ribs, and when are you going to have it?" And I have to explain to them, "We don't have it anymore, unfortunately." We also, pardon, used to do Cinco de Mayo here in Old Town. That program was also discontinued. Tilted Earth was also discontinued. The one program that we still present on a yearly basis is TVR, and, and I'm not sure where we're at with that for next year, but my understanding is from Ezekiah Allen this morning when I talked to him, it was a big success. Commissioner Al House and Allen both indicated that there was a large turnout, and it was very peaceful. So I'm optimistic that that program will continue. Right now, the one thing that I would like to continue to pursue is the thing that I wanted to pursue starting in twenty-ten when we completed the rec center, and that is the trail system. It's still my goal, if I'm to stay on the commission, to advance that trail system throughout the Verde Valley. With the inception of the Arizona U.S. Trail System that is now being discussed by the federal government, it seems like it's an ideal situation for us to expand our trail system so that we can incorporate that statewide trail system into part of our trail system and make Cottonwood one of the locations, destination points, if you will, for trails in the state of Arizona.
Very good. You sort of covered everything, and I hope council was following along because you, I think, did cover what your specific qualifications for this board and commission are, and you did also cover what you hoped to accomplish during your appointment. Is there anything else that you would like to add?
Only if there's questions.
Okay, are there, uh, well, do you have any questions of us? We're not, do you have any questions for us? No. Okay. Very good. Would council like any other clarification on any of the other points that you brought? Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Hulse, for being here. Okay, up next is Richard Rokus. Thank you for being here this evening. I hope I'm not mispronouncing your name.
Oh, that's very good. Thank you.
Is that a Hungarian name? I'm just curious.
Pardon me?
Is that an old Hungarian name?
Yes, it is.
Okay, very good.
As Zizefeling is actually typical of Hungarians, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here in front of you this evening. This is a little bit of a switch for me. I'm usually on the other end of this. I'm usually the interviewer. Usually the interviewer is supposed to be the interviewee, so it's been quite some time. But from my perspective, we're relatively new, quite new to the area. My wife and I moved to Cottonwood less than two years ago. In fact, Halloween will be our second anniversary here and we just totally love this environment. Well, my wife is from a small town in Los Alamos, New Mexico, and we have a belief that is it's very important to give back to the community, to be in service of others in whatever way or capacity that would lend from our skills perspective to what the community needs. Since we've been here, we have become actively involved in the Northern Arizona Healthcare Foundation. We have started a program with them called Project Keon, where we request people to contribute the brand-new stuffed animals that go to the children's hospital in Flagstaff, where the kids then have these as kind of little comfort tools, if you will. And it's been a very successful program. We started it two years ago and thinking we would get maybe about a dozen a year and we've been very blessed to have people contribute in the vicinity of over three hundred animals over two cycles. So we're very proud of that. I'm also a member of, and I think the only, member of SCORE in Cottonwood. And that's something, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to bring to you and the council sometime in the future, is how we can at SCORE become more active and involved and supportive of the small business development people here. We've got a good rapport with them. We work with them on a pretty regular basis and we're looking to find more people who want to become SCORE members. So we've done that as well. I currently am also, and continue to be, faculty for Regis University in Colorado. I teach online courses that are in concert with my background and expertise, which was primarily developed through a career in aerospace. I worked for Lockheed Martin for thirty-eight years on the business side. So my acumen there has to do with managing, leading people, large organizations, the human resources aspect of that, managing people to go along with the technology. And it was a very rewarding career. It's a very heady environment and you're working with some very challenging situations and some very challenging people. So I found that to be something that I really enjoyed and would look forward to being more involved with activities of the community in that respect. From a Parks and Recreation perspective, the individuals who spoke before, we talked about programs, my focus, I'm thinking right now, would be a little bit more along the lines of places. Where would we do this? Trail system obviously is very important. We grew up with the trail system in Colorado when it was put in play and developed end to end. You can walk the entire state of Colorado on a trail. And so I'm familiar with how that operation came together and how it functions. And so things like the trail, but more than that, as the people who spoke early with the PowerPoint presentation, you've got to have a place to recreate. You've got to have a place to do arts and things of that sort. And I think outdoor activities are paramount. We have an ideal geographic location where we could, I think, with a little time, effort, energy, put more emphasis on where we could do those things. We've got great facilities now, but there's always, I think, opportunities for us to expand them, especially with the younger kids. And so I've got two grandsons, three grandchildren total, but two grandsons, five and ten, and I tell you, they need space. City proper is nice, but it's, you need elbow room, so.
You've described, I think, your hope, your specific qualifications. That would be question two.
Okay.
Is there anything else that you wanted to add to your specific qualifications for the Parks and Recreation Commission?
I don't believe so.
Okay. And then the last question is, what do you hope to accomplish during your appointment? I think you're starting.
That's where I was leading into a more visible presence and space where we can do the kind of things. I would hope that the end of the day, at the end of the term, people would look back and say, good things were done by this group to help further those venues for the young as well as the older folks who would want an opportunity to go out and recreate.
And now it's your chance to interview us. Do you have any questions for us?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for being here this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Okay, so like I said, we'll add up both scores and combine them and come up with a recommendation to council and we'll make an appointment at the next council meeting. Thanks to all of you for reapplying and for applying to serve on this commission. Thank you.
And do you want to add? If somebody doesn't get appointed to this commission, please look at other commissions. We have other openings as well.
Many other openings, many other opportunities to get involved. Thank you for that. Yeah, we really have a lot of different ways to get involved in the city, so thank you. Okay, so next up is claims and adjustments.
I move we pay the claims and adjustments.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Norman made the motion and Pfeiffer seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye. Amanda?